Special, your best.
Sure, if you're having the Father's word, we thank you for your love and your mercy. We thank you for safe travels here tonight. God, we pray that everything that we've done in this meeting, I'm pleased with you. It'd be the best interest for the entire family, Lord. I pray that you watch over us and I'm sure that all those requirements of being in the interest of the county would be met, Lord, that you stand with our family.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, stand, however you want to. Now, before we get started, Officer Pappy Westgate, who is a longtime officer for Owen County Sheriff's Office, Spencer PD, his wife Jessica passed away Monday night. They've been married, I don't know, many, many years. They've got three or four kids, grandchildren. She fought a good fight against the cancer battle, but she lost her life Monday night. I stopped by and seen Pappy yesterday, and it's tough. So, please remember Pappy and the, and the family in your prayers, please. Okay, Commissioner Riss will not be with us. He is out of the country. Norm, you here?
Yes.
I'm here. The approval of the minutes, we have three sets of minutes to look over. I've looked over them. We had that August 15th joint jail meeting, our August 21st commissioners' meeting, and September 4th commissioners' meeting. I'll need a motion, or if you have any questions on those, Commissioner Warner.
No, I'm good. Motion to approve.
All in favor, two oh. Financial budget, Sheila? Well, I couldn't, but I guess we'll have to pay the claims and payroll. I bet you guys think, this guy never changes. I don't much. Claims and payroll, payroll is $309,389.58. Regular claims, $205,377.76. Out-of-cycle claims, which consisted of utilities and jury duty, $18,430.58. Total payroll and claims, $528,357.92.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the payroll and claims, all in favor, I, two oh.
You have an updated financial report in front of you?
Yes.
With some updated amounts of payments, which may change at this time.
Praise God. It's good news. Okay, next thing, old business, we're going to move into the jail project updates discussed in the presentation. We have, don't, Mr. Carmichael?
Yes, sir.
Trying to remember your first name, but I don't, so.
It's Terrence.
Terrence, Trice?
Close enough, we're good.
Trice, Mr. Carmichael from Waddle Brothers, would you please come up and turn on your mic? It's already on, and let us hear what you guys say, sir.
I appreciate it, so if you're able to cast that screen a second.
Nope. I see you guys here.
Have cable on?
I have to have cable.
No, I can just turn it around.
No, no, here's I take it, I'm out, I'm out, man.
No, that's a, that's a power cord. And you, we didn't, we couldn't get Bluetooth work on though, could we, last time? I guess you'll have to turn it around.
All right, no problem.
We can go with that.
All right.
First, thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak with you.
Yes, sir.
I know we've gone back and forth. Just a quick introduction, I'm Tyce Carmichael, I'm the Chief Growth Officer and Chief Information Officer with Waddle Brothers Construction Companies. This is Josh Nagle, he's our Assistant Vice President of Preconstruction, and Chris Seoli, Vice President, he's over operations here. So, I brought the right guys to answer any of your questions. We appreciate this being a dialogue and not a presentation. We don't want to talk to you, right? We want to talk back and forth and answer what you want to know. So, we'll keep it very brief. We know everyone wants to get out of here, but just let you know us and, and what we're about and what we're ready to do. So, just a little bit about Waddle Brothers. We were established in 1946 in Bloomington, so just under 80 years, next year we'll be our 80th year. Offices in Bloomington, Indianapolis, and Evansville. We do $250 million a year plus, so not small. We've done jobs of all sizes, and we self-perform heavy-site civil, concrete, general trades, few other things through there, but primarily that's what we would self-perform, so we can actually bring the labor and work to that, not just management. And we have some other markets, you can't really see them, but obviously we're here to talk about a few specific ones today.
Sure.
Right? So, some delivery methods that we're comfortable with and do on a regular basis. Pre-construction services, right? Costing, getting things down, working through the plans. Josh right here has done it for a long time and is one of the best around. General contractor, have a long history of that. Construction manager, whether that be CMA or CMC, so at risk or CMA, we do both. We can be design, build, and build, operate, and transfer, right? So, lots of different options that you guys have, and I know that you're weighing. So, with that, we just wanted to cover our project understanding, make sure you didn't have anything to add or anything else, right? You guys passed that tax increase in late 2020, that .2%. I think that was a great move. We have somewhat jail design in hand. Do you guys have construction documents complete on that, or just kind of the, the first ones? That's great. This design are roughly close to the same design with same architects, been built a couple handful of times over the last three years. The lowest of those costs was 22 million, and one recently here in Indiana was about 25. You guys have a duty to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. That's something we certainly appreciate, right? And a desire to use as much local participation as possible. And construction costs, we'd be lying if we told you they go down, right? So, they continue to rise, and that's just part of it like anything else. So, a time to act is now.
So, I'm stopping.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, please do.
So, I like the desire to use as much local partner.
Yeah.
So, I know BW's guys are here again, they've been here for the last two years, it seems like, but that is one of our main things, and that is a bridge we're getting ready to cross here soon, is we have local people here that does a lot of work, contractors, concrete, people, whatever. And we're gonna, I'm going to get down to speaking with you, the county attorney's going to speak about moving on forward with RFPQ, unless, you know, we're not going to delay nothing. And I appreciate the fact that you also do the BOT, but it's imperative that whoever gets this job, it's imperative, because they won't move forward if it doesn't happen, that we give the opportunity to local contractors. Now, if they, if they meet, I know they got to meet certain qualifications, inspects, and if they do, if they want to bid on it, hallelujah, if they don't, that's on them. I just want to make sure that we, whether it's electricians, plumbers, concrete, landscape, I don't, I don't care what it is, I want to make sure that everybody, every spec of this jail building, if we got local people that does that kind of stuff, I want to make sure that they are involved in the project, if they meet the qualifications, and if they choose to do so.
Absolutely.
That's a must for us, because I won't move forward unless, at least, we check all those boxes, and they'll bid of, they've already heard this, but we have a lot of good people in this county, and taxpayers, and, you know, their kids go to school here, and they, their tax dollars, and if they, if they can operate and work here, that's, that's the number one thing.
Well, yeah, understood.
We went through, I just happened to the way, we're near the convention center in Bloomington, very similar requests, keep it local as much as possible. We kept the owner involved upfront, they helped us establish the pre-qualifications, interviewed the contractors when bids came in, relied on them to tell us if they're within budget and you want to use them, if they're not, it's their decisions, their money. So, we let the CIV really direct us on, hey, they meet the criteria, you want to pay the money or not, and we let it up to them to make that decision.
That's good. Thank you. Norm, jump in if you got anything.
What did they, did they use a BOT or?
CMC, Treasury Manager at Risk, hired us in early to help with the pre-fund, they gave us a, day one, they gave us a budget of 52 million, not a penny more, after built the convention center for that. There were some fluctuations back and forth on the cost, Josh navigated that. At the end of the day, we came in, all said and done was about $400,000, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, where our final number was, yeah. We, we started off about 3 million above their budget, and in the end, after all the bids came in, we navigated down to under budget.
So, what did the process look like to get from 3 million over to 400,000 under budget?
Well, so.
Just a 10,000 mile overview of it?
Yeah, so it, we, we had quite a bit of time, as, as the, we were brought in early enough that we could actually participate in a process, instead of just going in and chopping scope, that, that, we, we actually, I, I think they would agree, the owner would agree, that we checked the boxes to give them what they want functionality-wise and space-wise, so, so they, they still feel good that they got the building they wanted, even though we had to reduce some costs. A lot of, a lot of communication, a lot of meetings, a lot of understanding, what are those, what are those standards you have to have for this project to be successful? And then figuring out what can you massage and adjust on the outside of that? So, so really, we, we ended up having a lot of alternate bids that were related to finishes, to upgrade the finishes, you know, the, the base bid was to give them what they had to have to make it a good building. And they were ultimately able to take some of those alternates to get a higher-end finish, nicer-looking building, and, and still be under budget, so.
Good. And do you want to explain a little bit of the process, Josh, of how you're able to potentially shift packages for some of that local work, or?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can get creative with the, with the CMC statute in particular, how, how you're able to, number one, pre-qualify your bidders, and I'm glad you hit on that, that a project like this, for, it's going to be a longstanding building, an important functional building for the community, but there's also certain standards that have to come with it for the construction. So, making sure that those contractors are, are able to bill and honor their bids and honor their commitment to that project, that's an important part of that process. But, you know, we can divide up scope, we will find out where the strengths are of the, the contractors here that are interested in it, and work to, to build those packages out to where they can qualify for it. So, I, I think it's a, understanding the interest, the community interest is important out of the gate, and then, as you said, you can, you can, you don't necessarily have to have the whole, let's say, mechanical system under, if there's someone here who just did sheet metal or just did another package, you could have multiple packages that fall within that scope.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just about understanding the project and understanding the community.
Because the one of the things, and, and this is my fault, so I'll take blame for it, is I wish I'd had you in here earlier, because, but it, it doesn't change anything. The fact of it is, we're going to move with the BOT design, that's it. So, it doesn't change anything, because you're getting interviewed later, you know, compared to BW and Garmon and all, it doesn't change anything at all. So, I don't want you to think I was throwing you under the bus by dragging you in later, because it doesn't change the scope of the work project at all. Just want to be honest and fair with you, let you know that BOT design.
We're perfectly comfortable and capable with that delivery method as well, so.
First step is deciding how you want to do it to move it forward, so.
Yeah.
Got that taken care of. Thank you for the question, I like that. One thing about Waddle is one of our core values, we're client-centric, so what does that mean for a project or, or for Owen County Commissioners, right? Really, the taxpayers, everybody here. We pledge to be adaptable, flexible, and transparent, that's something that, that Chris and the operations team bring to every project, they're going to work with you, they're going to get to know you, and, and what your needs are deeply. We did want to point out, I went in and did the math myself, we've paid approximately $2 million in wages to Owen County residents over the last five years, so that's people doing work for us, specifically for Waddle Brothers that live in this county, paying into that tax, right? We'd love for it to be more, we're happy to bring in more men and women to work for us. We have a long-term relationship with the area subcontractors and suppliers, just in the next county over, but even some projects here and everything over the last 80 years, I'll be honest, I don't know the full number over 80 years, but it's in the billions of construction that we've done, and over the last five years, just in Bloomington alone, it's, it's close to that billion-dollar mark, just in projects just around here with some of the same contractors who are going to be bidding on your work. We have the historical data from that to do analysis and show you real cost. Now, you, you've already taken this one, so wait till our next slide to, to hear this point, but we're interested in any delivery method that you do, right? We don't just do one. We're, we're happy to work in whatever way makes the most sense and is best for you. If that's BOT, fantastic, no problem. And we're, we're builders at heart, right? So, we were built on this, we grew up as a GC, obviously have transferred to different things, now GC is actually a smaller portion of our pie, that's how the things go, but our, our people, our builders, I know Chris can speak a little bit to that, but we're going to get in on the project. No project has ever gone perfect. I don't know if people know that, but for some reason, they just don't go exactly how you plan, right? Something's going to come up. We're going to work with everybody involved, work with you to find the best solution possible and move forward. Sometimes that can be taken out of your hands or whatnot, that's not who we are, we're going to get in the trenches and figure it out. We want to work together and partner with you to do that. So, kind of to leave it, again, don't want to take too much time, and happy to answer any questions, but we're also here for the future growth of Owen County, being very close, right? That's municipal buildings, fire and public safety projects, large site development, utilities, office suites, public spaces, even some other stuff that aren't on there, but, but not just the jail or, or public process, we are doing all these in Navin Counties and other municipalities partnering with them, so we're very familiar with that, and it's something we've built ourselves on, is, is that type of relationship. So, what we kind of want to leave you with, and we want to open it up to you, any questions you guys have been asking, I appreciate that. We're interested to be your partner for however you guys see fit. We're here to serve Owen County, not just for this one, but for the future. We are in the area, we are around here, I, hopefully it makes sense, we've, you got three officers of our company sitting in front of you, right? We're, we're going to be here for anything that pops up, we're right down the road. Client-centered approach, it's, you guys are stewards of the taxpayer dollar, you guys have wants and needs and must-haves, and that's what we're here to deliver, and we're going to be solutions-driven. So, we're happy to take any more questions, like I said, we wanted to keep it brief and just kind of give an introduction, because as you said, bringing us in early, we don't, we don't feel slighted.
Yeah.
Being at a different time, it's, it's public dollars, you still have to, to advertise it and go through that way, we know I, we get our shots, so.
Sure.
We would have been here regardless.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
Appreciate it.
And I know me and you've talked.
Yeah.
Trading, and, so, a couple of questions for you, and I'm not, I'm just real straightforward. Have you ever worked with Garmon Construction or BW or Elavatas, that, the, let's start with Elavatas, they are the architects, have you guys ever worked with Elavatas? It doesn't make sense, can you?
I don't know of one, I don't know if you remember estimating one. If, if we have, it's been a little down the road, because it hasn't been in the last 10 years or so.
No problem.
Yeah.
What about Garmon Construction?
Apparently, we're in the joint venture with Garmon on the Monroe County Jail Justice Facility partnership on that.
That's a big job.
It is a big job, yes.
Must learn to talk about it. No, that's good, no.
Talking about challenges, but yes, we're working well together, and it's a pretty solid team.
Okay. What about BW?
No.
So, the county council, I want to thank the county council, at their last meeting, moved forward with Elavas to design.
Yep.
They put up the money for that, and I think I'm, I'm speaking not just for me, but I think Norm will, please you reiterate this too, Commissioner Riss is not here. Chief Deputy Miller, when I was county maintenance and sheriff and all that stuff, this is my 15th year trying to get a jail bill.
Yeah.
And we, we've made huge steps here this year alone, and with the council appropriating the money for design, we're not backing up now.
Yeah.
So, we're going to be moving forward with this project, and the county attorney will read his part here in just a little bit, but you have, you have the design, is that correct, sir?
Yeah, the drawings.
You have the drawings, I mean, yeah, you have the drawings.
Yeah, yeah, the ones that they have so far.
So, yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, on your other projects that you got going, because this, I think, is going to move relatively quickly.
Yep.
I mean, we got, we got guidelines to go by, he's got guidelines he's set up for us to go by, taxpayers, you know, they've been paying on this jail project for several years now, two different taxes, and they're ready for something to happen, you know, we've not even moved one rock yet. So, are you, are you being held up on any of your other jobs that would delay getting started on this job?
Nope. No capacity issues at all.
Does anything on that, and I know this is preliminary, we don't have the design, anything on there give you pause, concern, that you wouldn't be able to fulfill that?
Fairly standard layout for this type of facility, so I, there, there's nothing that was surprising in our early review of the few sheets that we were sent.
Okay.
Have you just been out to the site?
I haven't personally visited, no, yeah.
If you'd like to, let me know.
Okay, appreciate that.
Besides, yeah, we're just about wrapped up with that, all that swapping of the land, that's, that's done deal, we're just waiting on the final survey to come in. And the topography, is that the word, right word? You got it right this time. Right, I'd be mad, ain't you? So, waiting on that to get here, we should have that here just any time, so we can send it to everybody, so they can see that, but if you would like to go look at the site, just call me, we'll go, we'll have to meet you out there. And once again, my number, you know, my number, my number one concern, it's not a concern, is that the taxpayers deserve absolutely the very best they can get from whoever gets this job.
Absolutely.
Because at the end of the day, those three sitting there, there's going to be one that's going to get hollered at. So, and I'm a hands-on type person, I'll be right there when it's going on, I'll be out there, hard hat and all, you know, because I like to be involved, but I want to see the taxpayers be done right, and I want to see the county contractors have their share of, of, of the piece of the pie, if it's feasible, and if they're wanting to do that, that's my two main get-go's. The jail park, building the jail, with this BW, Garmon, Waddle Brothers, building jails, building jail.
Yep.
It's the taxpayers that I'm concerned with, and they deserve absolutely very best, because they, it's been a long process, so. You got any questions, Mr. Warner?
Nope, I think I got everything I need.
Do you have any questions? I know it's short and sweet, but.
Sounds like you've got next steps kind of laid out, do you have that timeline, or?
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, the next thing that's going to happen, the next thing that's going to happen is the board's going to vote on a resolution regarding issuance of the RFPQ. So, we'll, we'll do that next year, just a minute.
That's going to happen here, when we get down to talking to you, he's going to take over, and unless Norm has something that's, you know, throws a red flag up to him, he'll read what he needs to read, and we'll make a motion to move the sign of the RFP.
First step of the BOT.
Once that, me, you have to kind of watch me a little bit, Sheila watches me all the time, I kind of get out of line, because I like to go ahead, I'm, I'm waiting for the backhoes and dozers to show up.
We understand that.
You know, and the county attorney looked at me, and he's like, "Sir, sir, we've got steps to do," and I'm like, BW's like, "God dang," you know, so I missed a couple steps, not intentionally, by no means, but I'm glad you guys got to come tonight to present your side of it, and I hope you and some put your name in the hat.
Yeah, we'll look for that RFP to come out. Absolutely.
We appreciate you coming, and we'll turn this over to the county attorney for the RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you, man, all of you. And I apologize, sir, that I didn't remember your first name.
Oh, it's all right.
I still won't remember that, if you tell me any one, so. You get that? Chris, Josh, and Mr. Carmichael. No, it's not great.
Oh, it's all right.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Okay, next item is.
Next item is Resolution 2025-008. This is the next step required by statute in order to proceed with the Bill Operate Transfer. The resolution just lays out, again, that part of the statute that requires it. It explains that as part of the Build Operate Transfer statute, the commissioners next have to issue a request for proposals and qualifications. And so, attached to the resolution is a copy of that request for proposals and qualifications that'll go out and folks who are interested in bidding for construction of the project will have a certain amount of time to get their materials together and get it into you guys for evaluation. So, that's what's in front of you. Again, you're just voting on the resolution to allow that to go forward. Oh, and Sheila just reminded me that proposals under the timeline must be received by 2:00 PM on October the 8th.
October 8th. Is that doable? Proposals? You say it's got to be about October 8th.
Yeah, proposals got to be in by.
What did you say?
That's right. As wise as that, so.
They'll have to come seal them.
That's a good answer.
When they come in, we'll stamp them with the date and time that they came in, right?
Yes.
And then they'll all be compiled and, okay.
Yeah, then we'll move on to the next part.
And all proposals that come in get sent directly to the auditor's office, to the auditor's office, not to, not to the commissioners. We don't get them. We don't get to see them first. We don't want to see them first. They go directly to the auditor's office and not to us. You okay with that, sir?
Yeah, you have to do, yeah. Those have to be sealed if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Sealed, duct taped.
Yep.
Blue shut.
They'll be all opened at the same time. It's a process.
Yes, it's a process, but we want to make sure that they get in the hands of the auditor's office and when it comes time to open them, they'll bring them up here for the county attorney to open and not the commissioners. Okay, it's on the floor, brother. What do you think?
I move to approve the Resolution 2025-008.
All in favor? That's good. Moving forward. I'm going to bypass a couple of things here real quick because my brother Ron Remack is here and I'd like to bring him one up to get him started. And I know what some people's thinking. He's not my blood brother, but we're followers of Christ and that's the way we look at things. Is that correct, Ron?
Sure is.
Amen. Where's God?
As always, really appreciate the time. We'll be respectful of it. Just wanted to give you an update quickly on the Anthem situation and their lack of commitment to what IU Health Plans had promised. I, as I mentioned to you, made a formal complaint to the Indiana Department of Insurance. First time I've done that in 46 years of being in this business. They got to the right people. They said that they would get the information, the complaint directly to Anthem. Anthem has received that. They have until the 25th to respond to it, so that's just a quick update. In the meantime, the reason we're here tonight and the reason I brought Ethan and Scott is because we got a really competitive offer, I believe, from United Healthcare that's definitely worth your time and consideration. So, with all that being said, I'll turn it over to either of you for introductions and go through the presentation.
Yep. I'm Ethan Harper. I've worked with Ron for almost 10 years now. Actually, I used to work for IU Health Plans and now I'm over here. This is my boss, Scott. So, we're here just to tell you a little bit about us, United Healthcare, our network, plan design, all that stuff, and answer any questions you guys might have and all that. Scott, we'll leave this off.
Yeah, for sure. And thank you for the time and opportunity and like before, hopefully this is dialogue. If you have questions, please interject them, we'll do that. So, Scott Thompson, Vice President of Sales for United Healthcare oversee our sales teams for Indiana Kentucky, which is our local health plan. Local leadership offices in Indianapolis, so our sales and account management teams all sit here locally in the state of Indiana. So, on the slide three, just give you a little bit of overview about who United Healthcare is. So, we are a part of United Health Group. That is our parent company. We are Fortune 4, but we always say that very modestly though because big doesn't always mean good, but in the insurance and healthcare delivery space, it allows us to truly deploy different solutions to meet the needs of our employer and member partners across the country. So, on this page, it gives you a number of statistics about our presence nationally and the thing that I think will stand out the most is the network that we're able to provide to your employees and their family members as they are accessing care across the state of Indiana and also in all 50 states across the country, seamless network access as they're working through that. Slide four, talk a little bit more about our commitment here locally in Indiana. So, we do have over 4,500 Hoosiers that we employ throughout the state of Indiana, so we have a lot of people walking throughout the state serving our partnership here. Contributed over $393 million back in financial investment and most importantly to me, we've given over $22.1 million back to the communities that we serve. Most of those donations being focused on helping to remove health disparities across the country, or across the state as we look to improve the health of the Hoosiers. From a network perspective, which we'll get into a little more detail, all the hospitals in the state of Indiana are currently in network with us, so from an access perspective, lots of confidence for your folks as they're seeking care. Slide number five, kind of moving into the network piece of that, I mentioned that it is a national network, so across the country, if you've got employees that have kids off of college, they're going to have access to care within all 50 states, largest network nationally and the same network in all 50 states. One of the things that's a little bit unique about our network compared to others in the insurance space is that we actually have a very strong focus on the quality of the care that our providers give to our members. So, we actually evaluate primary care and specialty care providers based upon the quality of the care they provide based upon their own guidance from their various different national organizations. And then we also make that very easy for members to identify by putting two hearts next to their provider's name. So, if they need to seek care, they've got, need to find a new provider, they've got that guide to help them find the best provider for their situation. Can I talk a little bit about the employee tools?
Yep. Our provider search, as Scott alluded to, the two hearts will come up first and also the product that we built out for you guys, exact same benefit structure, but on our biggest network without a network. So, you'll see those two hearts, this highest quality, more efficient, cost transparent providers come up at the top, but also you'll just see everybody in the network and you can filter. It's very user-friendly, you can use it on your phone, all that good stuff. We also have a cost transparency tool, so if you have a procedure coming up, things like that, we'll be able to type that in there and get an estimate based on the plan design. The other unique thing we have is, I don't know if you've heard of Wellbridge Surgical, they're up on the west side of Indianapolis and they are focused solely on high quality but cost transparency. So, if, there's a list on slide seven, you know, just kind of giving their prices and the average for the Indianapolis area. So, if somebody wants to travel outside of the Bloomington or Owen County area to get better care at a lower cost, they have the option to access Wellbridge. So, it's very unique and great relationship that we've had with them for five plus years?
Yeah, one or five years.
And so, very good. And if you have any questions about our member tools, anything like that, we have best-in-class apps, websites, things like that, very easy to use. Moving on to the benefits, I'm going to let Ron talk about this and what they went through with the different carriers on benefit design and costs and things like that.
So, I think I shared this with you in an email, follow-up email after our last meeting. So, what you're going to see is the current IU, the first column, again, please stop me if I'm going too fast, but the current benefit plan with IU Health Plan, deductibles, co-insurance, copays, et cetera, and then the employee only, employee spouse, employee child, employee full family, what the premiums are monthly and then obviously annualized. Then, if you remember, Anthem came in with, again, not honoring the commitment that IU Health Plan had made, but they did come in and say, "Look, where we think you should be is 10% higher than what you are currently with IU Health Plans." Again, this would be for 2026. What they said though, they would do, would bill you the exact same amount of premiums that you are being billed for IU Health Plans with the idea, though, at the end of 2026 or early 2027, they would look at claims and if you haven't had a good claims year, then they can ask for that additional 10% that they're charging. So, although we appreciate the fact that they're willing to help you from a budget standpoint, the reality is you still have that exposure if you don't have as good a claims year as you've had the last few years. And again, trends are excellent. You guys have been a healthy group for quite a while, but as you know as well as I do, some things you can't predict on. So, we also wanted to take a look at SIHO in the last column to let you know, we had SIHO in here several years ago. Quite honestly, they have not been competitive for the last several years, but our responsibility is to be an advocate for you to make sure we've looked at every comparable carrier. Then, that leaves United Healthcare, which you can see from a benefit standpoint, virtually matches every benefit of your current. You're going to see a little difference in the prescription drug.
Yeah, that's.
Piece of the puzzle with $10 for generic, 35 for brand name formulary and then $50, excuse me, $60 for brand name non-formulary. So, almost identical, vastly larger network, which again, you're going to also get with Anthem. IU Health Plans has been a good fit for you. You guys have been model clients for them, but there probably are going to be some situations that this really opens up the opportunity for each employee and their family members to go where they want to go with virtually every physician and hospital in the state and around the country that is a part of the network. And then you can see the premiums, they're really just coming in matching the premiums, which would guarantee you, no stipulation, that the premiums for 2026 are going to be what you had budgeted for and are exactly the same as you currently have.
We got two questions.
Yes.
Number one, are you guys willing to do a multi-year contract? Because didn't we have a, supposedly we had IU.
Yeah.
We had a two-year, right?
Yeah. And that was, I'll let you guys answer because you're.
Well, the reason I ask is because if I get it one year at this and then you jack it up 20%,
Yeah.
then we're in trouble.
Yeah, for sure. So, it'd be something we'd have to review with our underwriters that have looked at the risk of the case to see if they'd be willing to extend a second year rate cap. I would say in doing business here in the state of Indiana, we've been able to grow our book consistently year over year and we don't do that by buying business on the front end and then increasing the rates in year two. You know, from our perspective, there's a lot of time and investment that we make in the front end to bring on a new customer, educate members, make sure that everything is set up correctly. So, we really try to take a long-term approach as we're underwriting on the new business side so that we can maintain long-term relationships.
And if I might add to that before, excuse me for interrupting.
Nope.
Is the fact in all my years of business and doing all the benefit groups that we do, IU Health Plans was the first carrier that had come up with any two-year rate guarantee, which was again, based on certain criteria, the healthy results, blood work, healthy coaching, participation, incentivizing. So, it really is, I'm not surprised by their answer market-wise.
Yeah, but keep in mind that we're being pushed by the legislators in the negative and the last thing we want to do is if we can lock something in.
For sure.
That's as better for all of us.
Yeah.
Speaking for Owen County anyway.
Yeah.
Second question, currently the county employees are able to go to the clinic out here at the schools. Does that stay implied?
Yes, that's an, that was an independent choice that you had me analyze. I advocated for you, made the recommendation you do that. You've been doing that. We had the presentation last meeting. I think that's going really well. In fact, that's one of the things they look at, the fact that those, some of those claims, those in-office visit claims, et cetera, prescriptions really help the claims piece of the puzzle, which can, can't speak for you guys, but that's a positive.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely helps because you guys have that resource available so you can impact things early on versus people foregoing care and having catastrophic events that can occur.
And I even think there's an upside to the clinic. I still think a really strong, consistent communication marketing plan can get even more participation, which really means even a deeper return of investment on that.
I got a question on the prescription, because that's where your increases at. Can you?
The, yeah, so we have a higher copay, looks like for tier one and tier one, tier two and three, so generics, so it's $5 versus 10, 10 versus 35 and 30 versus 60. We do not have a tier four, as you have currently, would fall into that tier three category. I will say that the one thing that we have spent time and resource on the last 12 months and have launched is, you know, there's a lot of copay assistance programs that are out there now, GoodRx, Mark Cuban RX benefit. With our pharmacy benefit, we're able to, at the time a person gets the prescription filled, look at those various different other options that are out there and if their cost is lower than what the copay would be, we can actually fill it under that lower cost option. So, the copay structure is kind of a worst-case scenario.
Okay.
Especially for some of those generic drugs.
That answered it. I appreciate that. So, going back to Norm's, let me back up. I put my faith in God, but I put my trust in that man sitting there between us.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you, because he's been here for us for years. He's, if he's lying to me, I would never know, you know what I'm saying? But he's not, so we have, there's a certain amount of trust that we have to put in people like Ron Remack, you know? And for him to say to me and to the Board of Commissioners that this is your best choice means a lot to me because I'm not in the insurance business and I'm not here just patting him on the, but you know, there's a level of trust that we have to put in people like Ron in order for this county to move forward. So, but I do, I do agree with Commissioner Warner on something. I would like to see, if it's possible, more than a year's agreement. Now, as we know, you might have a year, we had two-year agreement with IU and that, that went away, so that's the reason we have him. Because when agreements go south, stuff like that, you know, it makes it tough on the employees. When they're thinking, they don't know what kind of insurance they're going to have, what they're going to lose, what they're going to gain, it makes it tough on the insurance for the employees. So, if that's something that you could look into, I'd greatly appreciate that and I'm sure like Norm said, the other board member would as well.
Yeah, we definitely take that back, no promises, but it's worth the conversation.
Well, absolutely. I mean, you have not because you asked not, so you have to ask.
Yep. And that kind of gets us into the next slide too, whether a multi-year deal can be worked out, if it's underwriting or not. We also have our account team, so you'll have an SAE Strategic Account Executive that will work with Ron's team on the renewal, you know, if that's year one or year two, but they'll be able to track that throughout the year and keep a good gauge with Ron's team on where you're going to be at, good or bad, kind of where the renewal is going to be. We've already discussed, you know, we're talking September here for one, one, so we'll be able to get that renewal if it is only one year way ahead of time, so you'll be able to plan and budget. Along with that, we have a field cap manager that will come out and help us with enrollment, be very hands-on, explain any benefits. The benefits should be the exact same, so shouldn't be a whole lot of questions, but there always is that pop-up, so we'll have that. And also, Ron's team is very knowledgeable and will be here to help with that. Implementation, there's going to be a project manager on it, very hands-on, very in-depth. We want to make sure everything's set up correctly from the front and just moves smoothly from the get-go. And we usually ask for about 60 days for that implementation, but can be done 30 days, things like that. It sounds like you guys want to make decisions way ahead of time for the budget reasons, so we should be in a good spot there. Also, you'll have a dedicated client service manager. Also, you'll have a dedicated client service manager. Every day, any day-to-day questions with any of your employees, family members, things like that, that might have an issue come up or a question come up, they'll be able to email somebody locally, direct, and talk to them on the phone.
And that, that team's really there to partner with, with Ron's team, right?
Yep.
And support things on an ongoing basis.
Good.
And then from implementation standpoint on slide 10, pretty straightforward, it looks like a lot, but we make sure, we take all these steps to make sure everything's set up correctly. You guys have your benefits, you have your ID cards way ahead of time for that one-on-one enrollment. Also, we have access to a bunch of health improvement resources, Quick for Life, Level 2 is for, you know, anybody with type 2 diabetes, just kind of guidance there. A neat one is One Pass Select, gives you access to hundreds, if not thousands, of places to work out, facilities like that. So just extra benefits for being on the UA2 plan.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What's a proprietary provider network? What is, what do you mean by proprietary?
So we, we own the network. A lot of our competitors, I think your current arrangement, right? They've got other networks that they partner with that they don't own. So we actually own and control our network, which does make us a little bit different in the insurance space because we have local network teams in all the markets that we serve. So in Indiana, we have a dedicated team that works with the various different facilities throughout the state, providers to recruit, maintain relationships, and make sure we can keep broad access within our network on an ongoing basis. So we're not, we're not paying somebody else to access the network. We own it and control it.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, he had a treat, and I got him.
We talked to him beforehand. He asks lots. But I will say, and we didn't include it today, we have five core values that kind of ground this organization. I think the one that stands out for me here locally is compassion. You recognize that we provide insurance to help your employees and their family members through difficult situations when they're accessing healthcare, which is not because they're choosing to do so. So we really try to walk in the shoes of our members on a day-to-day basis and try to make that healthcare journey as easy as it can be, recognizing that a lot of times it can be very scary and financially impactful. So, you know, we've had the opportunity to work with, with the county, we'll look forward to serving your, your members in the same way.
Well, you know, the insurance is a benefit to the employees, and we got good, I mean, we got good benefits.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying they get paid that well, but that's a different can of worms. But having a benefit with the good insurance package means the world to the employees. And I'll be honest with you, I've heard some employees say that if it wasn't for the insurance package, they wouldn't be here. You know, so insurance means a lot. About everybody sitting here, they've got kids, grandkids, or something going on, including myself, that, you know, insurance is, is a huge thing. And once again, you know, pat Ron on the back or however you want to do it. But he's been a big advocate for us to have a good insurance package for many, many years. So we appreciate you. It's coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you.
Yes.
Yeah.
So in the transition, we come and help all the employees. We give a presentation to, you know, there's a lot of us that.
That's a good point.
Will have to wait, you know, or if it's something that we have now, is it going to pick up? What's it going to do come January? Procedures that, you know, do we put them off or wait? So there's going to be a lot of employee questions.
For sure.
So I would, I mean, I really think having all the employees to be able to talk directly and ask questions and see what we're doing, and sooner than later. I mean, I think that should definitely happen by early December at the latest.
Yeah.
Just because it's a huge transition and putting stuff off.
Great suggestion.
Go, Kevin.
What was the name of the healthcare company?
United Healthcare.
United Healthcare. Amy stood out to me particularly because I remember reading in the news last year that based on vendor analysis, that insurance company had the highest rate of claim declines. Now, I know that varies by state. Could you guys speak to that, claim declines versus annuals?
Yeah, most definitely. Great question. Yeah, and that's been in the media a lot, the entire insurance industry around that. So there was the initial story that happened, and it came on the heels of our CEO being murdered in December of last year. Well, it came from a website that was a third-party website and pulling from data from state exchange plans. So United Healthcare, we provide insurance in Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurance, like we provide to the county government. That came from individual health plans. We dispute the facts that were included in that. Because of the scrutiny, we have done a lot of analysis of our denials that are in place. And for our commercial item business, it's less than 1% of claims are actually ever denied for clinical reasons. Most of the denials that occur initially are administrative in nature. So hospital bills with inaccurate number of information, birth date, et cetera, and it gets denied, and it will work incorrectly. From a clinical perspective, it's less than 1% of claims that are denied under our commercial insurance claims.
Good question, Kevin.
Great question.
Very good question, yeah. So our plan with IU ends, it's in this year, or it's going to be in, in next year?
January 1.
January 1? We don't have a lot of time, do we?
If we're talking 30 to 60-day transition period, we're going to need to know something by the end of October?
Yeah. I mean, we need, we're kind of on the short straw here.
And you are, you are, you know, the good news is that because of your budget, et cetera, if and when you make the decision, like Ethan just said, we can do some of the things. We can make sure when you get the decision really late in the year, because there's about 70% of all plans renewed, which means carriers are absolutely packed. And sometimes when they're packed, you don't get their best because they can only go so far, as far as rates, and so far in regards to availability of key people to be there. So the sooner, no pressure, but the sooner you can make a decision, the better, so that we can do some of the things that Sheila just asked about, et cetera.
So do you have any idea how long it's going to take you to find out if we can do a multi-year?
Well, one more next week, early next week.
Because our, our next commissioners' meeting is October 2nd at 9:00 AM.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's two weeks.
And if the numbers do, don't change, we've already, we already have the finances for next year, correct?
Yes.
Plus a little, because we knew about.
And we can have you look at that one again, and do the October 2nd, the multi-year. The council budget, we've already set aside, and they estimate $10,000 per person. So if you can let us know, that's, they, they need October 14th as their public hearing on the budget. So if you can have that information sooner than later, so if we need to increase it, we can, we can take that step.
Yeah, because, yeah, if, if we could have all that information before our next commissioners' meeting, October 2nd, that would give us a chance to potentially make a decision October 2nd. Then we'll take it to the council on the 14th. Because they do have the money already appropriated. But I don't want to wait up until November to make this decision because we've got the change over, and I don't want any employee being left in the dark, so to speak.
For sure. Yeah, and it goes back to address your, your question about the education for employees and members. And we partner with Ron's team on that, but we would welcome and encourage that, right? We recognize it's a big, big change to change insurance companies. We want to make sure that people understand how to navigate the benefits, find the resources, to seek providers and all those in more details.
Well, if you can provide that information, get it to Ron, and Ron, he'll get it to us.
Yep.
I agree. I mean, we don't want, we don't want to delay it. We, well, we can't delay it, so.
Right.
Employees deserve the best from us as well. So if we can have that information by, before our October 2nd meeting, then we'll get it presented to the other commissioners, right?
Sounds good.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Ed. How are you? Bless, thanks. Good to see you again. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go back to the Human Resources Position Contract. This has been a topic of great discussion for many, many months. A lady by the name of Addie Rooker, Rooker, came and gave a great presentation to the commissioners. I know Anton, the council member, was looking for a number, a figure. They gave us two proposals. One is for, for consulting services, and another is for, for the policies, the handbook, the county handbook, policies and stuff like that, which they would work hand-in-hand with the county attorney. Because for the employees, I don't want to be just dead horse, you know, but our, the county's employee handbook sucks. And sir, I'm looking at you square in the face because you look like another guy from BW. And I looked at you a while ago, and I'm like, they got to be brothers. So I apologize. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to be staring at you. You know what I'm saying? So.
I was actually wondering, I.
Well, you looked like a, I think, then I thought to myself, yeah, that's not him. Sorry, you just got to excuse me.
That's all right.
But anyway, I'm glad you're here.
Everybody will get put in the line if I get it.
You do, but you're going to be found guilty, I'll tell you that. So with this, for the Board of Commissioners, the policy update, working hand-in-hand with the county attorney, is the, is the first thing we got to do. Our policy handbook is not right. It's not been right for, since it was wrote. So Norm, have you looked at this?
I have.
Do you have questions?
I, I'd like to see more than an estimated timeline, just so that we knew our number. But I know that may be out of the question, considering the scope of the work.
Well, and, you know, you might ask the county attorney, I don't know how long it's going to take to rewrite the, the policy handbook. It's going to take some time. Because it's going to take input not only from Wagner rooms and shield, the county attorney, but it's also going to take some input from the department heads, you know?
Right.
That's my opinion.
Well, I know we, we had a hard number from the council, right? 50 grand? Was that right?
That was for the human resources.
That was, okay. So that's just for this?
Yeah, this is, this is strictly for.
This is outside of that.
Update the personnel policy.
You guys have requested it, and the council voted and agreed to do a one-time change for it. Addie related last week, and she was talking with us that it would be a little bit before they could get started on it. For some reason, I'm thinking 16 to 90 days was kind of the bulk of it, working hand-to-hand. They, she wanted a three or four-person committee to be working with, and obviously input from all of the departments. All the departments were given an actual complete copy of the current manual. And following tonight's meeting, we were going to encourage everybody to go through and work it up and get it to us. We don't want every department calling Addie and.
No.
Doing stuff, which is why I don't want to keep the committee small as well.
I mean, I know it's got to be done. And, you know, if it has to be open-ended, it has to be open-ended. We got to get it done.
Well, we don't, we, you know, we've been beating the dead horse for.
Right.
Many, many years, but I'll.
It's not a deal breaker. I'm just, you know, I don't like open-ended equations. In some cases, you can't, you can't, because you don't know what you're going to get into when you get in here. Especially if you're getting feedback from multiple departments.
Well, that's, that's the reason.
It's going to take some time.
That's the reason we're going to establish the committee. But that's also the reason that we have the county attorney on board. I might ask the county attorney a question, you know? I don't know how long it takes to write an employee handbook, policy handbook. But I do know one thing, it's got to get done because the policy, the procedures, the handbook for the employees is asinine. It doesn't work. It never, it hasn't worked in years. So what's your thoughts on, sir? I mean, do you?
Well, in part, it depends on how quickly the committee can work. Because quite frankly, the committee is going to drive, to a significant extent, how quickly Addie and her folks can get it done. If the committee works quickly and gets their feedback and is responsive to what, you know, she can do, I think you can turn around fairly quickly. But I, I can't speak for them about what their workload is and how long it, how long it might take them, given the other projects they have. But I've worked with them over the years, and they're, they're pretty good at turning something around.
So is this something we go ahead and take to the council to get the funding for? I mean, next Monday night, and ask them to go ahead and then put the committee together ASAP? And, and get with Addie to see how far out they're going to be, once we get the committee put together? Because if we, if we don't go to the council Monday night, then we're going to be delayed again. So I don't know why we can't just put this before the council for the funding. And they've, they've talked about that. They just wanted some numbers.
Right.
Of what it was going to cost. They was very positive about, about this. They just really wanted the numbers. So I'd like to present, this is my opinion, present this cost to the county council on Monday night. Say, here's where we're at, these are estimated costs. If they can fund it, if they choose to fund it, get the committee put together ASAP. It don't have to be a committee of 20.
No, I'd say keep it as small as you can.
You know, so.
She actually said four or five, and we did three, four to the two.
So what are we, are we looking for a motion on this tonight, then?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we move forward with sending this to the county council for funding.
And with that motion, that will be also, that is going to be for Human Resources Consulting Services and a personal policy update. You okay with that amendment?
Yep, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two oh. Thank God. Commissioner Board appointments, I know we're guitar talking about that. Interviews are next Thursday, September 25th, beginning at 9:30. And I'm setting up all those appointments. Norm's aware of it. Dave can be your great. Norm, next Thursday?
Yep.
Okay. Chief Deputy. Miller. Sir. Sir.
Sir. So mine's pretty quick. We have Cradle Point modems, mobile modems in our cars. That's what connects our MDTs to the internet. We currently have one in every squad car. They go through Verizon. Was in contact with Verizon the other day. They have a current program going on. Well, to go back a little bit, our, the modems we have in our cars now were probably purchased around 2018. So they're, they're getting, they're still working, but they're probably in, getting near the end of their, their useful life for an electronic that's sitting in a car and everything else. Currently, they're working. We've had a couple of them fail over the last couple of years, but been pretty happy with them in general. Anyway, I was speaking with Verizon because we needed to buy a couple of additional ones. And they let me know that they have a program going on right now through NASPO that's kind of like a, like a government contract purchase agreement kind of thing through Cradle Point for these particular routers. They're about $1,000 MSRP. Verizon told me they can sometimes get them around 600, but with this program, they're able to get them at $100 apiece. So, and I'll be honest, right now, we've got working equipment in the cars that are getting probably towards the end of their life. But I think it would be stupid not to take advantage of this right now and get these things for $100 apiece and go ahead and update the equipment that, that's necessary to have in the vehicles we have. We have to have them. Uh, so if we don't do this and, you know, a couple of months down the road, one of these things goes out, it's a thousand dollars to replace it. So it's a hundred dollars, uh, per, per unit. Um, it's actually, the way it works is you, you pay the cost upfront and then your account is credited back. Um, so we end up saving about nine thousand dollars in the purchase of these things. Um, so it's not actually the, a reduction in the cost, they credit the account that we pay. Uh, I don't know if they bill us monthly or quarterly or how they do it, um, but they credit the account. So we would have a positive credit of nine thousand dollars on the account. Um, so in theory there, you wouldn't, you'd be using that credit to pay, to pay for the service instead of actually paying it out of the, out of the budget, so, um, you're saving that nine thousand dollars. Uh, the only thing I really need to know, um, there's a couple of things, uh, and I talked to Sheila about it earlier. Can the Commissioner's budget handle that? And it also will increase when we sign this contract, which is like this with everything you do. Uh, it's an increase in service costs of, uh, from thirty to forty dollars a month per unit. Um, I think we're probably gonna end up having that increase regardless of whether we get these things or not. They're probably just gonna increase the contract price like they do, like anybody else does, once we, we renew these things, so. Uh, so yeah, if, if that's something, uh, that we can do, I think it's a benefit. It saves thousands of dollars over the long run, uh, gets us some updated equipment in the cars, uh, that, you know, like I said, they are working right now, but I can't, you know, for a device that's that old, I don't know how long they're gonna continue working. They sit in a car all the time, the heat and cold and whatever else, so, uh, these are kind of like, they're supposed to be a more ruggedized version, so. Um, I have the paperwork here, this one, some of it's just a, uh, an agreement with, uh, basically for us to join this, to participate in this program, uh, for that cost. And then there's a quote here, uh, and then this one's just the, uh, the PO that I sign every year, just needs an updated version of it. So I don't know that it's a contract or anything, I don't, that you guys have to sign, but I wanna present it to you. If it is something that you need to sign, then it's here to be signed. If not, I, I will sign it and submit it if, if you guys are good with it, so. There's also, I will also throw out there, I've been talking with EMS for a while now, with Chris. Um, he would like to get his ambulances and medic trucks, uh, be able to, to access CAD as well. Um, they don't have that capability right now. One of his hangups has been purchasing equipment. It's not cheap, they're a thousand bucks apiece. So if we can also get them in on the same deal, we've got until the end of the month is when the program, uh, is set to expire, so.
So how many are you getting, twenty?
This, the, this, this, what I have right here is just for us. I, I just found out about this yesterday, I talked to Chris about it and see if it's something he was, you know, he may be interested in.
How many would you need?
Seven.
Seven? So can we make, can we make contact with them tomorrow and include you in on it, get them for a hundred bucks apiece?
Yeah, I think I can probably just include that in our, in our purchase, in our quote.
So Sheila, a hundred and seventeen, unencumbered?
Yeah.
That's, that's the balance.
If we're spending twenty, we're only gonna make it to April with that money, right? Twenty-two thousand a month?
This is just for the rest of this year.
That's for the rest of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll reset in January, we're not gonna piss it off?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, alright.
And there's always usually sixty thousand plus left over for utilities, so.
So you need twenty-seven of them at a hundred dollars apiece, but you're saying they'll bill us for?
Well, before those seven were added, it was eleven thousand five hundred and then they credit the account nine thousand. Um, so, yeah, I, I just have to get another quote from them, including those other ones with updating numbers, so.
That sounds like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah.
They're also upgrading, now, our current modems are 4G capable only, these are now 5G, um, so, you know, there is some technology increase there.
Uh, is there any cost beyond these devices for your vehicles? Hangers, any kind of stands or anything?
Yeah, there are the, there are the, uh, computer costs and, um, I'd like, I'd like to make, one of the benefits of doing this will be to, um, be able to make the, the ambulances hotspots. And then we can do away with modems that we currently have through AT&T that connects our, uh, heart monitors to the internet where we can transmit EKGs. So there'll be a savings there if we do away with those monthly.
Awesome.
Uh, but yeah, I'll, I'll have computer costs and the hotspot costs, or not hotspot, the, the monitor costs and-
Antennas.
And antennas.
So we have money Sheila to take care of this, and I mean-
And Chris has some money in his funds, like you said, it would be a little bit of a savings, it would be-
Yeah.
So, but again, currently utilities are paid-
Out of the Commissioners.
Commissioners. Chris's utilities come out of his fund, but it, it again, it's pretty tight, so it'll, it'll come out of Commissioners.
Well, I mean, but that's, that's what it's for anyway. So, and go back to that, what, what do we have?
Hundred and seventeen thousand.
I, I'd see no reason why we don't move forward with the-
No, I don't either, and I, yeah, listen, yeah. What you got there, is there something needs signed, matter of motion?
It's not a contract or anything here that I have and, and once they send me more, any kind of contract or anything like that, obviously, I'll bring it to you guys to sign. This is, uh-
He just asked us that our county test safety numbers are the same rate.
And I have to join, join this program-
Yeah.
Basically, that says, shows that we're eligible as a, as a government entity, um, as a law enforcement agency and, or, uh, public safety agency.
So any problem with us ordering two different departments on the same, okay?
Go ahead, Norm, if you have, make, I, listen, go ahead and make a motion, that way we'll have it just in case if something's-
So, we, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the purchase of the twenty-seven devices for the Sheriff's Department and for, uh, EM, MT, EMS.
And they're called, what are they called?
Cradle Point.
Cradle Point Devices. Yeah, I, I'll get to, I, yeah, it's a no-brainer, so, all in favor, uh, two oh, pass.
Thank you. Thank you for finding that.
Matt, could you, Matt, Matt? Sit up. No. Uh, nine-one-one contract, Dave Costin. Thank the county attorney for writing us up a, a contract and agreement. I, I, you're, you're gonna do your part on this, I, I don't wanna read the whole entire thing. But I, I do need to enlighten you on something, uh, Mr., Mr. Attorney. Um, I spoke to Dave Costin today, um, Chris and I, along with Jack White. Um, and I spoke to Alyssa. They get right in the-
Uh, you're, you're about a thousand tonight.
About a thousand. I get doughnut after walk. Um, it, it's needless to say that we have multiple issues going on at the nine-one dispatch center, would that be correct, Alyssa? So, uh, it's been going on quite some time, don't we dig up any dead bones? But Jack White brought Dave Costin into this and, and Dave Costin is an absolute wealth of knowledge. Um, he's done this all his life. I'm not gonna go into his credentials because they're impeccable. But I, I talked to him today, sir. And, uh, I know we got him scheduled here to start, start October first. Uh, we cannot, uh, afford a delay. Uh, Mr. Costin is willing to come Monday, starting at ten AM. That's the only amendment to this agreement that we'll need is he's gonna start Monday, whatever date that is. Um, he's going to oversee exactly everything that's written down here, assist in interview process, provide training and mentorship, develop a training program for nine-one communications centers and dispatchers, um, and, and all that good stuff. Uh, do I need to read the whole, the entire thing?
No.
Thank God. So, but my request to you is we're just gonna change, change the starting date to Monday. Uh, he's gonna meet with Deputy Miller and Chris Lunsford. Do you work Monday? Okay. To, um, get into the facility, look around, ask some questions, stuff like that. Um, Chief Deputy Miller, uh, put out today, we've had two dispatchers put in for the nine-one-one director's position, only two.
I did, I did send an email out to the dispatch staff today, letting them know-
Right.
Tomorrow by end of day if they're interested, give me the resume.
Yes. And, uh, Dave's got some ideas as well too, but he, uh, Dave feels that that's something we need to work on next week. Almost right out of the gate. And you was there on, with the meeting and I talked to you about it as well, so, to let you know, and glad you came, because we spoke today, he'll be here Monday at ten o'clock to get the ball rolling, if that's a fair assessment. So, Norm, for us, um, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, the county council, I don't even have to make a motion to Sheila, we were to prove this. Change the agreement. Uh, the council has already, uh, supported the funding for this, so I'm just gonna make a motion, um, to this, uh, that we adopt this independent consulting agreement between Owen County and Dave Costin to start, whatever date.
September twenty-second.
September twenty-second.
Alright. Uh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two oh, done.
We also need to make a motion.
That's gonna be a huge, it's gonna be huge.
Hang on a second.
Our other motion would be to allow the president of the Commissioners to sign this, since it's a one signature, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, no, two oh. Good to go. I'll get her signed. Now you gotta laugh, you know? You got anything else?
Uh, maybe, excuse sir.
Oh, Matt. No. Guys, thanks for coming. When's that truck coming, Matt? Matt? Chief Deputy Miller? The truck for the, for the building department?
Uh, they picked it up today to decommission it, so maybe tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, sir. Economic Development Corporation, Beck and Tilly's been taping, Highway Department, review. Got it. I said it was gonna be out at seven-thirty.
Good evening Commissioners, uh, excuse me for my appearance and my odor tonight. My cows may be bad neighbors, I've chased them right up the time, there's some of them still out tonight yet. Commissioners, I, I spoke to you earlier and you looked at the NDOT agreement in regard to, um, a local detour. We just got this yesterday, um, and right ahead this out to you. Uh, this is for your review for the next meeting. One of the things, um, that Commissioner Hobbs asked, we request is the project be postponed until after, um, during the time that the school was out, um, NDOT indicated that the location of the structure that is being replaced, uh, along with, um, they're concerned with river levels and railroad permitting, that the best that can be done is to start this project, uh, in July with a fifty-one day, uh-
Good going.
Time limit, um, so that is what, um, that is what you have before you, um, for review by next meeting. Um, the local detour would be around this project, would be down, um, Pottersville to Freedom Road, but to do, to get around, uh, what is going on. We would be responsible for the local signage, um, in areas where we wanna be clear that we don't want anybody using, uh, any detours. Uh, we don't wanna get in the same situation we were before. Um, so prior to that, we need to make sure we have signage that clearly states, no trucks, um, I don't know even, something as explicit as no trucks, you're gonna get stuck. I, you know, I don't know, because we did that before and we, they were stuck, um, so.
Can we get semis down Pottersville all the way to Freedom?
This is a local detour.
Just local detour, okay.
This is not for semi-traffic.
Alright.
The semi has, the, the route for the semi-traffic is in by NDOT and you'll see it takes them, uh, we have another one that I will be bringing before you at the next meeting, I just got today, so, I don't wanna misspeak. State Road forty-six, State Road forty-nine, State Road fifty-four is the NDOT detour for truck traffic.
Fifty-one days, huh?
And what was their reasoning for not starting until July? Why couldn't they start around when school got out?
Their reasoning is, um, they're worried about river levels earlier in the year for the structure they're putting in, as well as-
River levels?
That's exactly what they told me. Uh, as well as, um, railroad permitting, because they have to permit with, um, the railroad.
I guess we'll, we'll take this under review and come back October second for-
Then with David being out of country, I haven't had a chance to discuss this, um, with him at all, gentlemen, so.
Okay. We'll take this under advisement and let Dave look at it and discuss between now and next meeting.
We are continuing to ditch and put culverts in on, uh, Freedom Road in prep for the CCMG. I've spoken with Garrett Gulf of, uh, EMB Contracting and our tentative date, um, is somewhere around October fifteenth. Uh, for them to do that project, that will, when they do that project, that will also include the project, um, there by the community center, Pearl Street. It's actually High School Street, but it's, uh, referred to as Pearl. During that time, that leaves for next spring, Anderson Road, Glass Road and, um, Hollybrook Road.
So, with that being said, and you may have mentioned it, and I apologize, I'm thinking about something. How much longer will it be before we're done prepping for the last two, uh, Freedom Road and Pearl Street? How much longer are we gonna need to prep for the CCMG roads to be done this year?
Um, I think legitimately, I need two full work weeks. Now Commissioners, if, um, you know, weather stays good, I just wanna take that crew and start them right in, uh, to get as much done as we can for spring on the other roads, uh, that are CCMG.
So about that, and I know you're down, are you still down a mower?
Yes.
A, a mowing machine, I mean?
Yes.
Because I've had several calls for north of Gosport there. Stone Mountain, Jones, all those up in there. So, I'd like to get some of that done at some point, but I know you're down a mower and, and you have a body to put on it if you do have it running?
Um, well, Commissioners, you, um, allowed me to, um, hire two employees, we were able to hire one. Uh, we interviewed again today, but we haven't hired, uh, anyone else, uh-
So you replaced the one that left then, but you still got another spot you can fill?
I still have another spot I can fill. We're, we're mowing every day.
Yeah, I, I know, I just, I wanna make sure you, if you've got a mower that's broken, that we get it, you know, back on the road. If you don't have a body to put in it, then-
That'd be great.
You know?
And I'm sure we've asked this question, what's it gonna take to get that mower fixed?
Well, uh, as we- Well, as we have spoken, worst-case scenario on that mower, Blush Brothers, I've looked at that mower, and they believe that both rear and main, rear and front transmission seals are blown on that tractor. The tractor and tractor mower together, worst-case scenario, gentlemen, it's $40,000.
What's the tractor worth?
You know, I've had Charlie Mullin look at it, and he gave me a range, and I, I could be off just a little, but he gave me a range at one time, the tractor used because the hours is on it, and he didn't say it was in really good shape, was probably, in good shape, was probably $50,000. Salvaging, gentlemen, I think he checked on that, too. It was somewhere around $10,000, I believe. And I'd have to check back with him on that, because it, it has been a while, but, I mean, we did discuss that, and he did appraise it for me.
But it costs us up to $40,000 to get it fixed?
Correct.
Hmm.
And, gentlemen, that's the reason it's not, we have a press fixing, it's a, we need, we don't know whether it's gonna be $40,000 till we split it in two.
Are the other two mowers comparable to it? I don't, I'm just asking, because I don't know.
We have one that is, but what we really need to put in use is a mower trim, and the mower that's down is a mower trim. It's the mower with the arm that reaches up, trims the roadside, the others are...
They're sort of bush hogs or something?
On side mount, they set off to the side. And we have two of those running, and we have a mower trim running.
Do we have a, do you have an idea of a more cost-effective option, where we would go buy a used tractor that will handle the mower trim you're talking about? Is that even an option? I mean, Charlie's got some stuff setting down there, I don't know if they'll do the job.
Well, gentlemen, we, and I'm just gonna, you can come look, probably the best way to see, but Ed Burdine, who worked miracles with a welder, and he's welded, rewelded, and welded again on that mower to keep it together. I mean, it is what it is. The only thing I could do is see if there's something out there comparable, if that's the direction we want to go, because we really have no direction on this.
Right.
And if that's what we want to do, I'll get to work on that.
I'm just exploring ideas, I mean, I, forty grand, and that, and we don't know that that'll fix it, right?
Uh, no. Well, they said worst-case scenario, but, gentlemen, we have to look at it. I'm looking at this as the worst-case scenario with these guys, that's what they do.
Well, they didn't throw that number out by accident.
No, sir.
You think, Sam?
But it's, it's gonna cost me $6,000 to split it.
Yeah.
So...
That's what we're saying, if we could pick up one for ten, that would handle it.
If it's junk, it's $10,000. Costs $6,000 to split it, that means if we get $4,000 out of a piece of equipment that would be junk, if it's gonna cost us $40,000 to fix it?
That's correct.
Does that sound about right?
Yes.
It's not real good odds, but, then again, they may split it and find out it's not $40,000.
They could, I mean, they could split it and find out it's five grand. That was the worst-case scenario.
So, splitting it, costs $6,000 to split it, but the only way you're gonna find out what's wrong with it is splitting it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, if you split it and find out it's gonna cost $40,000, then it's junk to us, and we're not gonna spend $40,000 fixing a piece of tractor.
I wouldn't.
So, then you sell it as is for...
We're gonna be able to get out of it.
Very little.
Yes.
And we're still short a mower at the end of the day?
Correct.
Which is the biggest problem?
Yes.
What's Ed Burdine thinks wrong with it? It don't have that many hours on, does it?
It's got over 4,600 hours. Tractor looks really good, it's just had one operator in it, and it's an operator that just is impeccable, taking care of a piece of machinery. So, when you look at this machine, when you pull up, that gun thing looks brand new, you put carpet in it, and put padding on the pedals, so he didn't foul those up. I mean, we put him in the next contractor that was available, so the tractor, when you look at it, looks impeccable. It is 2019, guys, was out here on the farm. The only thing I would tell you is, we, I'd probably split it to see what the heck's wrong with it, but...
Who's gonna do that work, if we did that? Your guys, or we're gonna hire?
I, I would recommend that Blush Brothers do it, because if we got it, once we get it split, if it's transmission, that's who's gonna have to repair it. That is who has...
Is that, is that who gave the cost of $6,000 to split it, it's blocked and broke?
Well, guys, it's been sitting a while, as, as you both know, so I mean, um, I think what we ought to do, if that's where we're heading, let me do some reaching out here again.
I think we need to find, look, let's look for some other options, but then when Dave gets back, because Dave's a mechanic, I don't know, I, I don't, you know, kind of get his thoughts on this, we'll just press the issue, and we'll make a decision at the next meeting. But go ahead and get some other options. I mean, me, I think you're gonna have, personally think you're gonna have to take a gamble, split it, find out what's matter with it. Chris, you know anything about tractor?
I've seen one along the road a little bit.
Wow. So, we'll make a decision in the next meeting on...
And I actually, guys, just so you know, I've talked to a, a local mechanic that works on this kind of stuff, Jeremy down at Elite.
Yeah.
Um, I could talk with him again to see if he would be interested in splitting it. I, I talked to him early on, and I don't want to speak for him, but I, I could touch base with him again to see if he would be...
Obviously, anything we can get less than six grand that you already have is gonna be money in our pocket, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely speak to Jeremy down at Elite, and ask him if they can, what it would cost for them to split it. The only way we're gonna know what's wrong with it is if you split it, too. That's it. We sat here and second-guessed this all day long, but give it to Jeremy, but in the meantime, look at other options for other resources, to see where we're at. Money's the big issue for us here, that, you know, of course, we're getting, we're still waiting on budget and stuff.
Gentlemen, with your permission, I'll reach out to a local dealer, Charlie Mullin, he's a wealth of knowledge, and a lot of things he does for us, he gets nothing out of other than he does for us, so I'll reach out to him tomorrow again, because I reached out to him early on about this situation, just to see where we're at.
Yeah.
Where he thinks we should be, go, et cetera.
How many horses is that tractor?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty.
Well, it's doing us no good setting there.
No.
And if it's junk, it junk, we junk it.
I agree with you.
Okay. Alright, we'll make that decision at the next meeting, talk to Dave soon as he gets back. But you can reach out to Charlie and Elite, and find out if you get somebody can get it done a little cheaper.
Okay. Commissioners, after speaking with you and getting a load of the mulch approved, we've been patching holes, County Line Road was completed this week, I believe Baker School, I looked at it this afternoon, spoke with the operator, believe it'll be completed tomorrow. We'll continue patching, we have a list. Gentlemen, I...
How's your supply holding out on that? Because we were getting low, right?
We just got low.
We just got low, okay.
We just got low. But you have to figure, we have two patchers running right now to try to get ahead, gentlemen. That was 5,000 gallons, and they loaded twice today, and they pulled 250 gallons every time they pulled.
Yeah.
To get these roads complete, so it goes fast.
What's the cutoff date on being able to do that?
It's, it's temperature. It gets down in the 40s and stays in the 40s, those machines get really tough to use. So, really, this time of year, 30 days. And, uh, gentlemen, I want to touch base, because both Norm and David have spoken to me about dust control.
Yeah.
Um, I'm your highway superintendent, so I'm just gonna tell you what I think, gentlemen, we haven't put it on yet this year, and I know there's places that are bad, and I feel for those folks, but we are getting to the end of the season, and I just think we would be wasting our money to put dust control down there, because it, it, it's just getting there, and I just want to, I, I know you're getting calls, we haven't put any down this year, but, and it's not a popular thing to say.
No. Well, I'll just tell you, Dave and I both, we had, I thought we had the same person on that road up there, it was actually two different people, but Dave and I reached out to both of them and explained the situation, and they're, you know, they're not livid, you know, they understand our situation, so I think we're okay till next spring. Uh, next spring, I'd like to address it in some manner, if we, if I actually can.
Well, I would like to address it then this winter, I've given you all Clay County's policy in regard to...
Yes.
Uh, how they do dust control, and basically, they split it with, you know, the resident 300 feet, they split it, and they give them an option of who they're gonna use, and they have to write the check to that, that company, and they make, and these are the days they're gonna be here, it takes it out of the Highway Department's hands, although, and, you know, and if I need to provide that back to you, I will, but it's just pretty explicit, the road still belongs to us, and if for some reason we need to grade that road, even though it was put down, you know, we will, et cetera, but I think that is a better policy than what we've, what we've had, because we really, actually, you corrected me, but I don't think I'm wrong, I don't think there's anything written, it was just something the former commissioners decided, if you got a medical condition, you call us, and we'll decide whether you get it or not, and then if you get it, everybody on your road gets it. Well, then there was, I, I gave you all the list, there was 81 places in the county that we put dust control in front of.
Well, I, I think one of the big things about dust control, and I'm, I'm in favor of it, I went to Green County, and went through several places that they did the dust control, whatever they use, margarine, peanut oil, or whatever the case was, and it worked well. It was absolutely phenomenal, how that stuff worked. But the issue, and, 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 I'm not gonna hold no punches about this, the issue of it is, we don't have the money this year. That's it. But the mess that we, we've, we've encumbered and handled, we don't, we don't have the money, and I've talked to people out of Cold City, Stan's Road, different individuals throughout the county, and I just told them, you know, we don't have the money to spend on dust control. I wish we could.
Right.
And I think the people that's got asthma and stuff like that, the people, that, they come first, or however the emergency thing responds, but the issue of this, and then, and this is, this is going to come to play here real soon, is we don't have the money. We don't have the money for dust control. You know, now, we, we went to the council, and I appreciate, and I appreciate them voting to support the increase for the county highway, but that's strictly for roads and paving, but I think we need to, I think we need to look at dust control now for, for spring and next year.
Right.
I don't want to wait till spring, I want to address the situation now, and get it under effect, see what it's gonna cost us, get some sort of idea, because we should be in a situation next year to where we can provide dust control, to whatever cost it may be, to the homeowner's share, or however it's gonna work out, but I, I don't want to delay the dust control, I'm glad you brought it up tonight, because I think we need to work on the problem solving now for next year.
I agree.
I'll give Commissioner Riss the next week, and I'll try to have something for you for the next meeting.
That'd be good. Appreciate that.
Gentlemen, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay.
I do have one, another question.
Go ahead, go ahead, bud.
So, and we've talked about this, and you said at one time you had a board down there that had the rotation of the roads, and that's gone, I'm, you were told to take it down. Did we ever move, or, or do we have the, is it hazer, is that what it's called?
Yes.
That grades the roads? Is that done by you guys, or is, we talked about a piece of software that would do it?
It is, it is done by us, it's done visually. I have, um...
So, here's why I...
Five people, actually, five people trained to do it, myself, Chad Walker, Jeremiah Hutchinson, Kevin Shaw, and then Benita is our ERC, so she's also trained to do it.
Well, here's why I ask. I think it would go a long way, and it may not be feasible, and tell me if it's not, if we could get that, that plan out somewhere where it was on our website, where people knew, at least had some idea of what we were looking at, what is the worst road in Owen County, what's the best road in Owen County? Where are we gonna, where should we be focused on, so that they knew? And I don't know if that's even doable or not, but I think it would go a long way and save a lot of phone calls.
It's a document we have.
Okay. But can we get it out where it's a PDF, where people can look at it? I mean...
Well, I, I...
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I, I, I see where you're going.
I don't speak, but, yeah.
I mean, and it may be, that may be pie in the sky.
It's not pie in the sky, it's for, the, the thing that we have to wait on now, we gotta wait on our budget.
Right, right.
Our approval of our budget.
But we, we already have this plan. It, it, you know, it...
But there's a cost to it.
Yeah, right, I'm not saying it's done, I'm just saying, here's, here, you know, if we've got the roads graded one to 10 across the whole county, at least I know I'm living on road that's graded at a five, or a seven, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, alright, I see.
And that may not be what this is at all, I'm just asking questions, because I don't know.
But, you know, I, I don't want to keep this much longer, because I know everybody got things to do, but the one thing, there's no secrets out, and we talked about it, Greg's before the word, we're, we're not in the paving business, we're done.
No.
We're out. We're not in chicken seal business. We're in, we're in the maintenance of county roads, that's my, maintenance, maintenance only, ditching, culverts, bush hogging, and stuff like that, ma, we don't, we don't have the manpower, we're asset, we've got assets, but we're cash-strapped.
Right.
So, you, you got all this stuff setting over here, but we don't use it, we can't, nothing against anybody working out there, but that paving machine that we own out there, we do not need, in my opinion, I think you'll agree with that. That's a half million dollar machine setting up, covered up with a $60 tar. You, you, you sell those items, get rid of those items, you can take that money and put that into your dust control, or a certain line item that, that stays focused on that. I think if we can get, if we get our budget approved, and we get rid of some of the things that we don't need, we can set up a, a design, if we contract 10 roads out a year to, to chip and seal, whatever, and if, if, if you go down to French Lake, go down to Orange County and drive their county roads, they're not paved, they're chipping sealed, but they're on a rotation, like every four years, they come back and chip and seal them again, over and over and over, and they got some of the best roads, and Owen County's got some very nice, but they're chipping sealed. I'd like to see us, and it's a work in progress, go that direction, where we're, we've paved roads, but you gotta, you gotta maintain those roads that you paved, because if you don't, then you're back to square. Cause if you don't, then you're back square one again. I think if we can get some things on a rotation basis, get some stuff done, especially if we get this budget approved.
Well, and that's kinda what I'm saying. We, if we had the plan out there, let's say there is ten roads that we're gonna do each year as a chip and seal project. That would be nice to have that out there and everybody would say, oh, you know, Potterville's getting chip and sealed this year.
What needs to be realized, and you, you both have said a mouthful here tonight in regard to maintenance, and it's not a popular thing.
Mm-hmm.
But guys, since two thousand nineteen, we've paved and we've paved and we've paved and we've paved and we've paved. Well, we're not going to maintain what we started in two thousand nineteen. Those roads already need to be readdressed with a fog seal with a single chip. Doesn't maybe have to be a double, but a single. So you need to do something. You need to start crack sealing these roads. If you don't do that, you're gonna ro- lose what you've spent this money on and you're fixing to do that.
And if I, and, and, and I'm not in the paving business, but I went out and looked and did some question and answer and looked at some stuff. There's some roads that have been paved like you're talking about. Then they come along, they chipped and sealed over the top of that paved road. They fill those cracks with that emulsion stuff. And I'm telling you what, you're talking about a road. It saves the roads that are paved.
Right.
Doesn't mean you go back and repave over them.
No.
Chip and seal over them, what are, how they, they do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's another asset we need to protect. And,
Well.
I mean, it's, you know, we don't have to belabor it tonight. I'm just saying it would be nice if,
Sure.
if we had that somewhere where we could get to it, where people could look at it.
Okay, so, and, and with that being said, Greg, um, there's a, we'll call an executive session next Friday. At, I wrote this down here. At ten AM, Greg, okay? I'm gonna go over some things and stuff, and I don't wanna do it here in the commissioners meeting. So the twenty-sixth at ten AM, right here. Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I thought we were trying to get FEMA to do that day.
I never heard anything back. What time?
Well, I mean, I haven't heard, but I've reached out to them.
Well, I mean, if, if FEMA calls and says that's the only day, I mean, um, they can meet and we can probably maybe, we can't reschedule this though for an afternoon or anything, can we?
And I had to have it advertised by tomorrow or be it next Wednesday's paper to be able to have it on Friday.
So, let's, let's change the time. Is that fair? Is that okay? I mean, is FEMA gonna try to come in the morning?
They normally come in the morning.
Okay. So, Norm, next Friday.
What time?
Um,
Two o'clock or something. Late enough.
Trying to think, two o'clock or three o'clock. FEMA's usually here a couple hours.
Sometimes they come right at nine.
Let's make it two o'clock. Hopefully FEMA can show it too, so. Rotated in the wrong spots again. Okay.
Do I need to have anybody available but me?
No, no, sir. Just you. That's all I got. Unless you got anything?
Yeah, you know.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Greg.
Um, Commissioner, additional appropriation request, um, from, we're gonna go to the council and request, um, additional seven hundred thousand dollars of the MVH restricted fund. Uh, we have the money, we got a good cash balance in there. It's just, uh, Norm, to, to run us through the, the year. Uh, run, run daily operation projects, maintain claims. Um, you know, specific line items will be appropriated with the amounts. And Sheila wrote down, thank you for this, Sheila, very much. This is an estimated amount only, unspent money. And we got, this is a rollover bi- balance, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So if we don't use it, it rolls over and we have a good cash balance. Correct, Sheila? Thank you. So I'm gonna make a motion for additional appropriation for the seven hundred thousand out of the MVH restricted fund.
So when council approves the seven hundred thousand, when you go through and give me what line items, where you wanna divide it up, put it in? I mean, it can always be transferred, but it's easier to break it down and again. Just because we get the seven hundred thousand, we're asking, you got one point one eight million in there. You're getting in another four months worth of payments, so you'll probably still roll a year over with over a million. Um, this is just to get me through to the end of the year, trying to account if your weather bits or-
It's not, it's, it's not a spending spree.
Right.
We just have to get the appropriation done to get us through to the end of the year. This is not a spending spree on money, so. Yeah. Okay, got that done. We're on the roll now. Attorney, we're just about done. Department, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I've got, Sir Pro, sorry, Chris, just hang on one second. This, uh, we had a mold issue up in the courtroom, main courtroom, emergency situation. We called it in, we talked about this. This is Sir Pro. It comes to twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. And we got money in our Q cap to pay this out of. I'll be trying, I'll be hearing back from the insurance company to see if that's gonna affect a claim or anything. But right now, we need to get Sir Pro paid, get this invoice off the table. We don't wanna owe nobody and we can take us out of Q cap, but we need a motion.
So moved.
So moved to take twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents to pay Sir Pro for the mold cleanup. Third, uh, in the courtroom, main courtroom. All in favor?
Aye.
Too old. Hang on, Kristen, go, go. Uh, Veterans Memorial Park Roof. And we've got two quotes in. We got a quote from Still Waters Roofing and Construction, also got a quote from Bolt Construction. And it's to replace the roof and the trim. Uh, it's hail damage. Once again, we're still waiting on the claim for this. Um, but I wanna go ahead and, um, you can look at these, Norm, if you like.
Yeah, I looked at them.
Have you ever looked at them, sir?
Yeah, you, I have.
You've gone to?
Yep.
Okay. They're pretty much side by side, apples to apples, I think. Norm, what's your thoughts?
Um, I mean, it's such a small difference. I don't have any, um, I don't have any feeling one way or the other. I've never done business with either one of them as far as construction goes.
Well, they're both, they're both good business people and stuff like that. And it's, you know, uh, it's replacing the metal roof and the trim. It's, it's, it's apples to apples.
Where, where is this at exactly?
The Veterans Park.
Down on the building down there?
All, all the way down to Washington.
Was that an insurance claim?
We're waiting on to get a claim on.
Okay.
But regardless, it's got hail damage to it. It's gonna have to be replaced. Um, so you got two on the table here, sir. One for eleven thousand eight hundred nine three dollars and three cents. One of them is for twelve thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, you know, money being the issue, uh, let's go with the low dollar one, the lower of the two.
In motion, sir.
I need them, okay. I'll make a motion that we go with, uh, Bolt Construction for eleven, eight ninety-three oh three.
All in favor? Uh, so moved. We don't know yet. Just hang on to that.
I've got AT&T, unless you wanna get Chris up here first.
No, I wanna get Chris because he needs to leave. He's, he's emotional and everything. You wanna turn that around? Everybody can see this. Um, I'm not gonna speak, I'm, I'm doing all the talking it seems like. But, um, we have a Doughboy statue on the northwest corner of the lawn. Uh, the, the Doughboy statue itself was made by a gentleman here in Owen County, corrects? So, Chris, I'm gonna leave it at that because this is your project, not me. I'm, I'm tired of talking. It is now, sir. Go ahead.
So, um, uh, months ago, we had someone, um, approached commissioners about some, some military memorials around the county that needed some attention. Doughboy statue was one of them. Now, like, like Sam said, the, the Doughboy statue was actually designed by a gentleman that lived here in Spencer. These statues are all over the United States. Um, but, so, so that's kinda special to us that it was designed by someone that lived here.
Absolutely.
Um, and we got, Sam got Jack White involved because he's an awesome patriot, um, really supports veterans. And, um, you know, you can ask him about flag etiquette, he's all about that. I mean, he's, he's just an awesome patriot. So Jack put together a team of people, uh, to look at, at what could be done with the Doughboy, um, statue to get it kinda refurbished, I guess. Uh, we're very lucky that we've got a gentleman that lives here in town, has taken classes through, um, the Smithsonian Institution and knows how to, um, repair statues, how to preserve them, how to, how to clean them, how to polish them without doing any damage to them. Uh, we've got, he got a, a, a guy involved that knows how to, to clean like the stone or the rock around it. Uh, we've got some, um, really talented people on the team. We've, we've got the ADA, um, consultant that the county uses involved in this project. We've got the veteran service officer. He's reaching out to all the veteran organizations to make sure that we don't do anything to, um, I don't say upset them, but to discredit the, the military, um, trying to get them, uh, involved in this also. Um, we've just got, Jack did an awesome job putting together a great group, group of people. And what, one of the things I said to Jack earlier was it was a shame that, that the sidewalk moves around that Doughboy statue. Um, and it's a shame that it's just a sidewalk. So you walk past the Doughboy. It's, we really need something that you can sit down and enjoy the statue. Sit down and have a conversation with people from, from the courthouse and go out there in the sun and have lunch or whatever. So we started talking about different things we could do. First and foremost is, is to get the Doughboy cleaned, get the stone and, and the rock foundation cleaned. Um, the, um, plaques that were on it.
Yes.
Uh, all that, the statue and the plaques, they're both bronze. There's a process that you go through to clean all that. Years ago, when they painted, I think they painted the, the dome years and years ago. They also painted, uh, the plaques on the statue. Uh, so all that stuff's gotta be taken off of it. But anyway, what we're proposing is a concrete, what we're calling a plaza. Uh, a concrete area around the Doughboy, uh, that would be horseshoe shaped, uh, with seating around it, uh, at the new flag pole. It would be forty foot tall to handle a larger flag. Um, there'd be a, a, a pad out here, uh, which would be on this side of the, of the plaza. Uh, I hate using that word, but that's kinda what we're-
Best you can come up with.
Huh?
That's the best you can come up with.
Best we can come up with. Um, but there would be a concrete area there that's, that's got electricity already there, um, for a podium because they have all kinds of different, uh, not all kinds of events, but they have, uh, memorial services out there for, for veterans. You know, like, uh, Veterans Day coming up, the, um, police have services out there around that statue. So this would really enhance those services. Um, where we got the ADA, uh, officer or advisor, um, I say them all the time, I'm just realizing I'm using that wrong word.
Your folks.
Anyway, uh, we put in some pads that for wheelchairs to sit. One of the things you can't, a veteran that took a wheelchair cannot raise or lower that flag. So, cause he can't get his wheelchair over there, or her wheelchair over there. So we're looking at things like that. One of the things that, that the county had identified to whenever the, whenever the ADA officer, compliance officer came through was this sidewalk right here, uh, had some issues with the smoke and everything. So we're planning on fixing all of that. And we're gonna add six new monuments between the, uh, the plaza and the sidewalk that comes in the front. Those would be eighteen by eighteen limestone, uh, pillars coming from the Ramona quarry. So it means something that's coming from Owen County. Those, uh, pillars would be turned on a forty-five degree angle with a slope cut on the top of them. And then each one of the six divisions of the military would have an identifying plaque or envelope put on top of each one of those. There would be uplighting in front of them, so at nighttime, they're just being moved along in front, in front of that pillar. On this side here, this, this shows the same style pillar. We're gonna, we're proposing to turn that, you need to go straight instead of on the diagonal to, to make it not identify as a, as one of these. And we put a plaque on here to explain by Kuesney and who he was, and he was from Spencer. Um, just kinda so, so that the meaning of that statue doesn't get lost in history. There's a plaque there explaining who he was and where he came from and, and what, what it's all about. Also secondary, these pillars, and if you see some, these are just symbols of stones put across this, which would be the east side of the sidewalk. These would be just stones as barriers to harden the, um, the front of the, of the courthouse so that vehicles couldn't drive into the courthouse in, in like terrorist attack type things. So we'd be replacing the sidewalk for us from the plaza over to the courthouse. Rearranging some parking to meet ADA standards. And that's, that's kind of a project in a, in a nutshell. Uh, we kind of are, are ready to start this project, but we need some approval from the commissioners to move forward at this point. We're ready to break ground. Monday, Tuesday?
Monday.
So it's been a long road to get here and a lot of key people involved, talking about it, designing and, um, so that's what we're proposing to bring to the commissioners and hope that you guys will approve to, to move forward. Most importantly, everything that has been done to this point, the drawings, the designing with the concrete, the designing with, uh, the limestone expert, the, uh, the concrete. Up to this point, everything is one hundred percent donated to us. Now, there will be, I mean, you know, a company can't afford to put this much concrete in without, you know, charging for the concrete.
For the materials and paying for the stones and-
Yeah, there will be costs there, but we are very, very, very confident that this can all be done without one dime taxpayer money. All through donations.
Norm?
That's it.
Well, as long as that's the, the case, I, I see no reason why we don't move forward. It doesn't have any financial burden on the taxpayers.
It's not. I've, I've, I've been involved with the project for quite some time and like Chris said, this is, uh, Do donations? Uh, I know that Janet Rommel from the Community Foundation is, uh, is working on this, uh, to, to raise money as well. And I'll, I'll say, uh, you know, my son is in service and, uh, dad and I was and stuff. And I'll, I'll say, uh, you know, my son is in the service, and, uh, dad and uncle and stuff. We can't do enough to honor the military, men and women of, of, it's not just Owen County. This is a representation of military women, men and women all over the, all over the world. And I said this a long time ago, this board of commissioners do everything it can to help, support, and defend our military, and, and to be able to do something like this, through donations, and people caring, and Chris and Jack and all the team that got put together. My hat's off to yous for what you've done, but.
Yep.
Uh, you made a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the project.
I'll second that motion and move forward, work begin Monday, uh, morning. Um, we'll send a email out, uh, now, we have roofers coming in to do roof work, but we'll work between those. But the lot will be closed off again, for that half of the lot, Sheila, however you wanna call it, uh, from here, from here till.
Will everything be out of the way by Monday, from this weekend?
Yeah, they'll clean up on Sunday.
Okay.
They'll start the work Monday. I don't know how long it's gonna take, don't make no difference, our own tags, we'll get it done.
Our goal is to have this done by November eleventh, which is Veterans Day. And that way, we can, uh, rededicate the statue, unveil it, rededicate the statue, and have a ceremony out there, uh, on Veterans Day.
And the good, and the good part about that is letting the veterans do that. Let them dedicate that. It's nothing to do with commissioners or anything else, let the veterans dedicate that to the milit- yeah, but I think it's a wonderful thing. It'll be a big to-do that day. I'm looking forward to it.
Short, short timeframe, but I think, I think we can get it done. It'll be a little bit long, five or six weeks.
It's five or six weeks, it'll be a.
A lot of work there.
It is, it is a lot of work, but you know what, it can be done. Many hands make light work, quarter my wife.
She just won't be here, huh?
Step right into that one, then, I'm ready. So, yeah, good deal, thank you, Chris. Um, you two fine gentlemen, got anything to say? You mean, you just come sit here with, listen to this all night long?
We were actually at the, on County Community Foundation's golf outing today, and so we just drove right over after it was done.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We, we are taking donations, we're. I mean, use that's the community foundation, you know, you might wanna go back tomorrow and, and leave a check, I'm just, you know, I'm just kidding. So, but appreciate you guys coming. Um, and the lady in back, I can't remember your name.
Sandy.
Sandy, hi Sandy. Um, the, their, for their, um, the rezoning thing and stuff like that, we'll be getting some more information out soon on that. Um, I didn't wanna ignore you, 'cause you sit, you sit, I want our time to listen, so.
It, it, I thoroughly enjoyed all of this, I've learned a lot, and I, um, apologies, she don't have some Oracle.
Well, my wife wanted me to relay the message to everybody, and Kevin, I always thank you for coming, and Benita and Dale, Mr. Walker. But my wife did want me to reiterate to everybody, and I thank the county attorney, I don't, I think he stalked her. She's gonna make some of those kitchen sink cookies again, and some, I thought you, I thought, yeah, and some, and chocolate cupcakes.
Michelle, tell me and I get our own container.
Michelle, if you're listening, uh, the county attorney in order like their own container.
She just had technical difficulties on her end, she didn't hear that one.
So.
We do need to do.
She's listening, she, she's listening, I guarantee it, so, but, um.
We need to do these two.
Oh, well, we're not done. Go ahead, Mr. AT&amp;T.
So, we have, uh, two AT&amp;T proposals in front of us, one for our phone service, which will drop our bill from sixteen fifteen eighty-eight a month, down to seven seventy-eight forty a month, so.
What's the drop?
Uh, about nine hundred dollars a month, because it cuts out all, oh, uh, long distance, when we go with a fiber circuit.
That's what you two been working on, ain't it?
Yep, so, uh, we, uh.
That'll pay for the trail point.
We will, uh.
I mean, it'll pay for the trail point.
I'd like to move forward with this, because it's another no-brainer. Uh, and then, this proposal is for the fax handling, which is a separate, uh, separate but the same, because fax lines are historically copper lines. They're gonna be switching over to fiber, there'll be a box between the fiber to convert that to a dial tone, so the fax lines will still work. Um, and that just needs a signature, so, I, I would, uh, I'd like to make a motion on this one, that we allow Sam to sign this, because it's a one-signature document. And then, we need to get both of these going, uh, we'll continue to work with them, we've talked about the phone numbers. Uh, there's a bunch of numbers that we won't need any longer, we believe. If we run into a number that we do need, they can put it back online fairly quickly. Uh, I've talked to Mr. Stensler, uh, about this, uh, Sheila and I've talked about it a little bit. Uh, I think both of these are, we need to move forward with this. It's a long time coming, but.
So.
Copper lines are going away, so this is a fiber option that'll get us off the copper.
I'm not gonna plead stupidity, but I'll plead ignorance, I have no idea what you're talking about. But I, I trust you, Norm.
It's gonna save us nine hundred dollars a month, I'd say we.
I like the nine hundred dollars a month part, so what's, what is your motion, 'cause there.
Well, my motion is accept both of these proposals from AT&amp;T, and then allow you to sign the one, so that we're under contract with them, and then we'll get started on getting this stuff switched over.
Is that good enough? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, two oh. Now, anybody from out there got anything you wanna talk about? New speculating? Well, county attorney? Madam auditor? Oh.
We seen George Lord, yeah. Got one more.
No, we were done that one. Yeah, we worked, we talked about that earlier. So, I think that's it, man. The resolution, we got that adopted, this, so you're ready, you're gonna handle all that stuff? We're out. Let me take a look at this real quick, in case I didn't miss something. Sir Pro, we got it took care of, Veterans Park. Well Brothers Camp. Public comment. No, no start, no sentence, let me raise your hand, Chris.
Eight fifteen.
Kevin? And, uh, do God's looking good, by the way?
Thank you. I think the neighbor's gonna beat me, even though I started first.
They're on the ball, ain't they?
They are.
No.
Last I was here, uh, Greg said he was gonna bring you that proposal on Hayden Road for you to look over. Did that ever get done, did you have a chance to look at it?
I haven't seen no proposal.
I thought we got an email that said it was done, that Hayden Road was done. I'm assuming it's not done, I'm in Hayden Road?
No, I mean, he's gotta do all this, the community crossing grant roads first, if that's it. We're just wanting to get a timeline on when Hayden Road is gonna start.
Yeah, make a note of that.
Yes. Let me just call Greg in the morning, Kevin, I, I should've let, you should've just over the chair or something, while Greg was up there and asking. Called Greg about Hayden Road.
So, if you don't care, I'd like to say something.
You say anything you want to.
It's personal, though, it's not business, so, let's get off our business, thank you, Rob.
Go ahead.
So, I, I would like to, uh, to let everyone know that Lori's grandmother passed away Friday, we had her funeral yesterday. Uh, ninety-six years old, lived a, a right, a right life, and was a wonderful lady. And, uh, my wife took care of a lot of the arrangements, and has been a real trooper, and I just wanna, I wanna let everyone know that, uh, she will be missed. Some of yous may have known her, a lot of yous probably didn't, but Betty Hendrix. Um, she was a, she was a rock for the family, and, uh, and Lori has handled it very well, and I just wanted to, 'cause I know she's probably listening, wanted her to, to know that we were thinking about her.
Amen, brother. Always in our prayers, everybody is. Anybody else got any, anybody in public, Dale, you got anything, you said it all night long. You happy?
If I repeat something, it's a rumor.
That's good. Okay. Sheila? Me, use your.